Would Councilwoman Salisbury lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance and I will give us invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our dear kindly Father, we are grateful this evening to come together and to do the business of the city council. We ask for thy Spirit to be with us so we might be mindful of the citizens of Riverton and that we might do our very best to make progress, go forward. We're grateful for our city staff, grateful for our police department. We ask a special blessing to be with them, that they might have safety as they do their job and that they might be watched over. We ask you to be with the highway patrolman's family and him this week that was injured in Lander, that he might get well and that he might recover fully from his incident. Grateful for his service to us and his protection. We're thankful for those service members that are from our area and from the United States that keep us safe every day. We ask you to bless them with the knowledge that we appreciate what they do. We're grateful for the opportunity to live in Riverton and recognize what a wonderful place it is and ask for thy Spirit to be with us that we might conduct business correct this evening. We ask for these many favors and blessings and we do it in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Would the city clerk please conduct a roll call?
Yes, Your Honor, Councilman Dean Pronto.
Here.
Councilwoman Lindsey Cox.
Here.
Councilman Mike Bailey.
Here.
Councilman Kyle Larson.
Here.
Councilwoman Kristy Salisbury.
Here.
Mayor Richard Gard.
Here.
The Chair would entertain a motion to excuse Councilwoman Borders from tonight's meeting. So moved.
Second.
Dean, was that your second?
Yes, sir.
Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. I declare quorum as present. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented. So moved.
Second.
Councilman Pronto has the motion and Councilman Bailey has the second. Any further council discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passes. Consideration of Resolution Number 1438, Adoption of Fiscal Year 2021 Budget Amendments. Finance Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. It's a statutory requirement that the staff review the annual budget at the end of each year and make a recommendation to appropriate cost centers that are or will be over expended at the end of the year. It's the goal of both the staff and the council to maintain financial stability within the organization, which is achieved through monthly spending review, quarterly fiscal health reporting, and recommendations for budgetary adjustment when circumstances occur outside of the planned budget. Historically, unanticipated expenditures are covered through line item transfers from other cost centers within the budget, and we're able to appropriately balance the budget through this methodology without requesting an increase to the bottom line in each respective fund. So with that, I'm going to run through each of the funds that are requiring address for the budget and give you definition and dollar amounts that we're looking at for those. We're pleased to report that the only recommendation for adjustment in the general fund is a transfer of $2,500 to the municipal court budget to offset costs associated with restitution received by defendants. When defendants are court ordered to pay restitution, the monies are received into the revenue line items through the court fines in the budget, and then the checks are issued to the victims through the restitution line item under the expenditure side of the budget. It's similar to a clearing account. There are other cost centers that have also realized a savings in the budget, so at this time, rather than requesting an increase to the bottom line of the general fund, the staff is recommending a transfer of available funds from another cost center to the municipal court. Given this option, there will be no request for additional funding for the general fund budget this year. For the water fund, the staff is-
Good job.
Thank you.
Just while you're right there, thank you.
For the water fund, the staff is requesting a total adjustment of $16,600. As with the general fund, savings from one cost center will also be used to offset another in this fund. The accounts within the water fund requiring attention are the debt service and the water distribution cost centers. The debt service adjustment stems from underbudgeted costs on the debt repayment for the North Federal Loan. This is the first payment on a 20-year note. While annual installments are $28,325, the initial installment was $35,736, and that was to account for interest from substantial completion of the project until the first payment due date. And then the deficit balance in the water distribution cost center results from extensive repair costs in the system maintenance line item budget, which you've heard about all year long as we've paid expenditures and then Kyle's had discussions with some of the issues that have come along. The cost center overruns were due to emergency repairs of water line breaks, the Main Street Water Valve and Fault Replacement Project, and then replacing failing water meters as well. Again, there's no requirement of new monies to balance the water fund. We are simply going to reappropriate from one cost center to the other.
Fabulous, thank you.
Thank you. So we'll move on to the sanitation fund, and here's where the money talks begin. So this past September, the city council approved the emergency purchase of the seven-and-a-half-ton overhead crane to replace the 40-year-old crane that had failed an inspection. Additionally, the organization faced an unbudgeted expense in the replacement of the tub grinder and the truck that was lost in a fire last June after approval of the budget. And finally, the curbside recycle cost center suffered the loss of a motor on the recycling truck this year that also required replacement. The cost to replace the tub grinder and the truck was in excess of $599,000. Our current expenditure budget reflects a shortage of approximately $352,400. Now bear in mind that we did receive $358,000 and some change in funding from our property insurance claim and also funding from Fremont County to help replace the tub grinder. So these funds will offset the costs of the expenditures. However, we need to increase the revenue side of the budget to offset the expenditures that we have incurred this year as well. So looking at that, we are making this request for 352-4, but we've already received the money to offset those costs.
Thank you.
We are also requesting a $6,100 budget amendment to the airport fund in the terminal building cost center. The charges of the heat and electricity exceeded our budgetary expectations by 13% this year. The staff has budgeted accordingly in the fiscal 2122 budget, and the funds will be transferred from the airport operations cost center, so no new monies are required for this adjustment as well. And finally, there are two fiduciary cost centers requiring attention. The first one is the senior citizen's operating account. With the approval of the senior center's solar upgrade project and the subsequent change in management, the senior endowment board sought council approval to pay the costs of the unbudgeted expenses through the senior endowment funds. The funds will receive a reimbursement through grant funding, and then the senior center is also going to provide repayment for those funds. In the rendezvous fund, due to the unbudgeted purchase of a new balloon envelope purchased this fiscal year, the repairs and maintenance line item in the Riverton rendezvous fund is also over expended, and this was approved by council action on November 17th of 2020. The city staff transferred $13,000 from the rendezvous envelope fund to offset the costs associated with the purchase, and the remaining balance will be transferred from cash. So in summary, the proposed changes will reflect adjustments of $420,600 with a net increase of $395,400, which is essentially 1.4% to close the fiscal year budget. Much of the offsetting revenues have been received, and the only cash transfers are reflected in the fiduciary funds. With that, I would stand for any questions you may have.
Thank you, I appreciate that report, very well done. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1438 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, Proposed Resolution Number 1438, A Resolution Providing for the 2020-2021 Budget for the City of Riverton for the fiscal year beginning the first day of July 2020 and ending the 30th day of June 2021 inclusive.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1438. So moved.
Second.
Councilman Bailey has the motion. Councilwoman Cox has the second discussion. Does anybody have-
I just have one question, I don't know if it's for Mia or Kyle, but on the power increase at the airport, is that just like a rate increase or did we use more power? I guess what was, any idea?
Your Honor, it was simply utility bills, so it was Black Hills Energy and Rocky Mountain Power, the two bills that we actually pay out of that cost center, so I don't know if it was just due to rate increases. I could see during the summer months that we saw a little bit of additional use, and that could also be just attributed to the higher level of traffic that we're seeing.
Okay. Anyone else, Dean?
Spend all that money on LED lighting up there, you'd think it'd go down.
That's right. You would hope, right? But we can see better up there, so maybe that's how we lost money, we saw where we were at. Anyone else, any questions? It looks so good to me, I appreciate the hard effort, there's a lot of work there. I appreciate you moving that around to make it work. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of Resolution Number 1439, Junior Football Field Naming Dedication. City Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. The City of Riverton has intercepted the letter with a request to rename RJFL Field in honor of Brett Watson for his time and efforts associated with the development of youth football and service in our community. I don't think, going off script a little bit, I don't think any of this is information to our council, who Brett Watson, who Brett Watson, I apologize, was and his services here. We received that request, and I had talked to different council persons that had talked about it, I believe Councilwoman Cox and Councilwoman Borders, and we received a letter. And so we were planning on doing it on the July meeting, and we received information that maybe we didn't have till July. And in doing so, obviously we did not, we looked into our documents and found that the RJFL field was, to our knowledge, was never formally named. As such, RJFL maintains a lease for the property and named it RJFL Field. And they wanted to rename it, and it was, so they, as an organization, have renamed it. However, we also felt it appropriate to continue to move this forward as it was originally planned, to propose to council a naming of the field, or renaming, however you would say it. Resolution 1439 would rename RJFL Field formally to Brett Watson Field, and if we've looked at the outpouring of community support, it's been exceptional, and I see no reason in the world not to recommend this. As such, staff does recommend approval of the resolution as presented, and we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tony. Would the city clerk please read the ordinance by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, Proposed Resolution Number 1439, A Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Riverton, Wyoming to Name the Riverton Junior Football League Field, Brett Watson Field.
Thank you. The Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 1439.
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Cox has the motion and Councilman Bailey has the second. Further discussion? I would just like to thank all of the council and staff for their willingness to sign a letter of support and to get that sent down. It meant a lot to the family and meant a lot to most of us that have worked for years with Brett and the many things that he's done for Riverton. I read his letter on County 10, and pretty amazing what he's accomplished in Riverton, and we're just awfully glad to have had him in our midst, and so we appreciate that. He wouldn't mind a baby talking either, so it's nice to have this opportunity to name that field after him, and I appreciate the offer to do so. So with that, if there's no other discussion or any other statements, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of Resolution Number 1440, Prohibiting of Fireworks. City Administrator's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Mayor and Council, this one's a little bit weird, and I'll explain why. Pursuant to previous discussions a few years ago, the City of Riverton authorized the use of fireworks with per Riverton Municipal Code as just standard practice on July 4th during certain hours and on New Year's Eve during certain hours, which we have had a number of years and have never stopped it whatsoever. There has never been a call or a reason to at that point. Recently, what came to our attention during the baseball, right, I think the day before the baseball, fire technics were going to go off, the fire ban went into effect. As such, we didn't know what that fire ban was at the particular time, and we hadn't read it, we just knew that it was coming. We did manage to work with the fire chief, who is here, and we appreciate his presence, and also the county fire official, and say, yeah, we can still do this. County Fire came out and did that. During that time period, when looking at the Riverton Municipal Code, it automatically allows it unless passed by resolution, because between the fire ban and when July 4th is, there's no council meeting other than what we had planned. Resolution is relatively simple, so while we're not recommending the adoption or the prohibition, the point of having it to council is that you don't get the option whether or not to do it if there isn't a resolution. And to be honest, if we didn't have a special meeting, we wouldn't probably have been even discussing it because we wouldn't have had a normal meeting and there was no call to do so. With that being said, passage of the resolution is the only way to actually prohibit. Otherwise, if either not motioned and taken up or negative vote, fireworks will continue as planned, as normal, as allowed, per the code, as they have the last few years. With that, Your Honor, we'd be happy to answer any questions for you.
Okay. Would the city clerk please read Resolution Number 1440 by title only?
Yes, Your Honor, Proposed Resolution Number 1440, A Resolution of the Governing Body of the City of Riverton, Wyoming, Suspending the Use of Fireworks on July 4th, 2021.
Thank you.
Tony has some.
Tony?
Mayor, I apologize, may I, to amend my presentation, it is important to denote that the fire ban, which is now attached, that we did get copies of, is not only stated as, but also clarified per the media, as unincorporated areas. So it doesn't apply to the incorporated city limits, and I think that's important to consider. I just forgot to say it, thank you.
Thank you. There's not many in the audience tonight, but we have Councilwoman Schatz with us, and if there's anybody that would like to address us on this subject, we'd like to hear from you, so please. If you do approach the mic, would you state your name and tell us where you're from?
Yes, Your Honor, Rebecca Schatz and Merrill Schatz, and we're from here in Riverton. We live up on Mesquite next to Tonkin Stadium. If she lets me talk, she likes to talk over me, but I just wasn't sure what the resolution was for, so I just showed up. But I am in support of fireworks on the 4th of July and the New Year's Eve. We do it twice a year in the City of Riverton. You know, for the last several years, we've done a lot to like move the community forward, get people to come and spend their dollars in the community, add to our businesses rather than going to Lander or outside of the county or even outside of the state. So I know that there are some issues with the fireworks inside city limits that people have brought up, such as, you know, a nuisance to the animals, or, you know, even individuals, combat veterans, for instance, might have some issues with it. There's always a way to go around those types of situations for those few that suffer from that type of thing. There's plenty of time in advance so we can let them know, like, hey, 4th of July is coming up. If you don't want to celebrate, you guys can, you know, go up in the mountains or go somewhere quiet, or turn on your TV and go down in your basement, for instance. Again, it's twice a year that we're asking to do this, and it's a way to keep people in Riverton, keep the ball moving forward and progressing our community. And then somebody had posted today about it, you know, that's American, let us celebrate our independence as Americans. We don't get to do it very often, and as we all know, over the last year, the things that can be easily taken away from us, let's not take one more thing away from us, let us do fireworks one day a year. And then an issue that we've had in the past, I just remembered this, I had notes, but it's kind of hard to get to my notes, it's on my phone right now, but the issue that we had was people not following the rules, you know, 6:45 PM to 10:00 PM. If your neighbors aren't following the rules, go approach your neighbors and tell them to knock it off. We should all have that kind of relationship with our neighbors, and if we don't, there's the RPD, but you know, have that conversation beforehand, like, hey, our next neighbor's Tony, Tony, can you guys make sure you cut that stuff off at 10:00 PM? That's part of the rules, that's why we get this. Talk with, not this Tony, different Tony, talk with your neighbors, have that conversation, let's follow the rules, and let's do this thing the right way, you know, 10:00 PM, people have to work the next day, so at least be respectful of that, but that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for coming, and thanks for bringing the baby, she's awfully cute.
I think she's ready for a nap.
We do have the fire chief with us, do you want to say anything, Chief?
Brian Hutchins with Riverton Fire. We really, on behalf of the fire department, we don't have an opinion on this matter. We'll be there no matter what happens, so.
Super.
That's-
You got to know that we really do appreciate the fire department, and we are thankful to have it, and we appreciate the volunteerism that's there, and we would like to support you when you need our support, so let us know when you need us, okay?
Thanks, appreciate it.
Brian's grandfather would be awful proud of him. Gerard and I are really good friends from a long ways back, and so it's nice to see how that comes up through the ranks. Gerard was fire chief and everything else, I think you could be in the fire department, so it's nice to have Brian with us. So, Tony, if I understand this correctly, we're going to move this motion, we're going to ask for a second, we're going to ask for a motion and a second, and then if people want to vote for this resolution, it would mean to ban fireworks, and if they want to vote against it, it would mean that fireworks would be able to still be shot.
Correct. And for clarification, Your Honor, only on the, we specify these only for the particular holiday that they're up against. Wouldn't know what to talk about on New Year's anyway, right now, but so if it does not receive a motion and a second, we launch fireworks. If it's brought up and it's rejected, we fire fireworks. You would actually have to pass the resolution in order to ban fireworks for the 4th of July this year.
Okay. Everyone clear? So, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve Resolution Number 1440. Appears we have no motion to bring up on the table, so the discussion will be yielded at that point, and it appears that we will have fireworks in the City of Riverton. Now that comes with some special requirements, and I believe our ordinance says that we don't allow fireworks until 6 o'clock on the 3rd, on, excuse me, the 4th, which is Sunday, correct? Jump in if I come off script. So Sunday, the 4th, at 6 o'clock, it is legal to start shooting fireworks. It stops at midnight on the 4th, and so that is a six-hour span of time. We have lots of concerned citizens that don't want to see fireworks shot, and so I would hope and ask for people to be conscientious in the use of their fireworks. Pay attention where you shoot your fireworks, clean up after yourself, don't leave a mess at the locations that you shoot from. You cannot use city property or school property to shoot off of, and if we don't have, we aren't big enough to send out police to every location that a firework goes off of, and so we won't do that, but we're asking those people that are going to shoot fireworks to be conscious of where they shoot their fireworks. Please don't shoot fireworks on someone else's property or on their roofs, or be conscious of where those fireworks are going to go, and be respectful. Does anyone else have anything else to add? I appreciate that, and I would hope that everyone would listen to us and follow those requests. We move on to consideration of Hill Street Change Order. Public Works Director's Report, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. Before you this evening is a second change order to the Hill Street project, and before I get into a brief description of the change order, I want to apologize to the council because in the recommendation line of your memo, I do have a typo. It reads 196, 165 and 40 cents, that should be 193, 165 and 40 cents. The 3 and the 6 are close together, and I had an error when I was typing.
I guess you'll have to pay the difference. Is it a plus or a minus?
It's a deduct, so that's good.
So you're going to make one?
So at any rate, I did want to clarify that, and I do apologize because in your recommendation it is $3,000 higher than what I had intended to put. As a reference, this is the second change order to come on this project. The first change order was considered and approved by the council on March 23rd, 2021. The Hill Street project, as you know, addresses curb, gutter, drainage, asphalt pavement, and then utility work as well. When change order 1 was considered by the council, it addressed cost increases related to the seasonal suspension, and it also allowed for the inclusion of utility work requested by the City of Riverton. Following the approval of change order 1 and the resumption of work on Hill Street, several additional utility conflicts were discovered west of Mam's Way, and if the council would like, I can also display an aerial image if you choose once I'm done with my report. This corridor is important because this is where the sewer alignment was redesigned, well-designed and redesigned to go. These utility conflicts were not identified by their respective owners during the design process, nor were they identified during the first round of utility locates. So again, these were not identified by the owners of the utilities. Fortunately, they were located at a later time, so we were able to at least plan around it, but this included at least two fiber optic lines, other communication lines. And in light of the tight corridor that's just west of Mam's Way, these unaccounted-for and unknown utility conflicts made it so the new sewer alignment was unconstructable. It became too challenging basically to thread through everything that was there, keep it on grade, and make it a valuable investment. To resolve this issue, city staff worked with the contractor to propose alternative alignments to keep the sewer in the project. What was proposed, and what we feel is a good solution, is to drop off of Hill Street with the sewer at 160 Hill Street, and then come across some private property and then down Mary's Way. From a planning standpoint, this actually is probably a better solution when we look at future planning and development of the City of Riverton. However, since it was not included in the original scope of this project, we need to address this- address this change via change order. The proposed cost and change for this realignment, as communicated in your packet, is $103,180.40, and I did double-check that number. So that addresses the first portion of Change Order 2. This is to accommodate the sewer needs of that area and to respond to the conflict that was not identified by the owners of the utilities. The second portion of Change Order 2 deals with our water infrastructure. As you know, there are two water lines that run down Hill Street, and one was designed for improvement as part of this project. At the time of design and bidding, we felt that the second line was in good enough condition and wasn't aged to a point that it required investment. It turns out we were wrong. When Patrick Construction excavated down to this specific water line so that lateral could be provided to Lot 1B of the Larson Family Edition subdivision, it was discovered that the ductile iron pipe was severely pitted and damaged and not in good repair, to the point that we felt and the contractor felt it was worth having a discussion about what we want to do in the future. Through the investigation of staff, we estimate that maybe this line has five to 10 years of useful life on it. And again, that's an estimate. Part of the reason why we weren't able to adequately assess this line during the design process is because we didn't have adequate information when the line was put in, in our own city records. We based information on the age of the fire hydrant that's associated with that line, but we discovered, unfortunately, too late, that that hydrant wasn't original to that area, and it was added on to the line later. So the distribution line in question is much older than what we originally anticipated. We also discovered that the changing conditions in the soil in that area have affected that line. Further south on Hill Street, this line was potholed, and observations at the time of potholing gave us confidence that the line was in good condition. However, the soil changed as you go further north on Hill Street and caused significant corrosion on that pipe, and then there were some changes in the pipe bedding, which again damaged the pipe. With that explanation, the second part of Change Order 2 will replace this failing section of line that's underneath the roadway. As you'll notice in the exhibit in your packet, the, the water alignment jogs off to the west side of the street and out of the roadway. So we feel that should that be an issue in the future, we can address it, but not as part of this project. And then also, we feel that, again, because of the different soil conditions, as you move further south, the condition of that line is better than what you find on the north. Patrick Construction has worked very closely with us on this, and they've proposed a cost to replace this section of damaged water line to the tune of $89,985. And that is a lump sum cost, all-inclusive, for that repair. The Fix Our Road Citizen Committee discussed the new sewer alignment during the June 14, 2021 meeting. The committee unanimously passed a motion directing staff to finalize plans for the new alignment and to bring its related costs to the city council for your consideration. The committee did not discuss the additional water work that I have just explained because it was not readily known at the time of our last Fix Our Road Citizen Committee. The city council has several options at this time. It could approve the change order as presented. It could approve portions of the change order, meaning you could approve only the water portion of the change order, or only the sewer portion of the change order. Obviously, you, you have the option to reject the change order and then associated work therewith. If you select to reject the change order in its entirety, it should be noted that there are material costs to the sewer that we would still be obligated to pay to the contractor because they've been stockpiled on the site, and those costs have been incurred for this project. We would also have to accept the risk that we would building, be building a brand-new road over top of a ductile iron line that we know to be in poor condition. And to use a poor analogy, is a true, truly ticking time bomb to when it would have water breaks and issues where our crews would be going in and disrupting that brand-new pavement. Costs associated with the Hill Street Improvement Project Change Order 2 will come out of the 1% fund. After subtracting existing obligations, we have a little over $1 million in that account. If you approve this change order in its entirety, which again is $193,000, $193,165.40, we would then have a balance of 819,195. Again, I have exhibits that I can present to the council should you have any further questions. Thank you, Your Honor, for your consideration.
Thank you. Anybody wanting before me? I, I think I understand this better than I really want to. And I don't see anything that we can hold our fire to, other than the fact that my questions come in, are we substantial, the hillside that we bring the sewer line down now, that we move off of the road and bring it over to Mam's Way, we're sufficient with cover and depth of sewer, with that area?
Your Honor, yes, that's been incorporated in the design. And I should add that the property owners have been very open to this new alignment. We are currently working on easement exhibits. We don't have them secured, however, they've been very open and have said that they will execute the easements. And we do have sufficient cover down that hill.
The engineering, you know, I, I guess the, we didn't get sufficient engineering on the access of this road is probably the best place to, to start with, where the problem starts with. And yet, we're almost doubling the price of this project. Not quite, but we're close to that, aren't we?
Your Honor, if this change order is approved, that is correct.
So, and I, I see that the funds are sufficient, that we're, if we make this change, we still have 819,000 in the 1%. So how does that affect the next year's projects?
Your Honor, I have prepared an exhibit, and I can present it, but maybe I'll just walk through it now in the sake of time. I have done a project planning analysis, looking into the next fiscal year and construction season. Based on what we have on hand and what we will accrue through the end of this construction season, I'm projecting a balance of 1.5 million and change. We carry that balance forward, and then we'll accrue funds through the off-season. And what I'm projecting, starting in June of 2022, is a balance of 2.79 in the 1%. Currently, our estimate for the Sunset project, which is our main priority for next year, is about 2.5 million. And that's a very rough estimate, and is probably high at this point. However, I'd like to project in a very conservative manner. Subtracting what I anticipate receiving and what we will have in outlay, starting next construction season in June, we will have funds to the tune of two, unobligated funds, to the tune of $290,000. And that is not, that is not taking into account this change order. So if this change order is approved, we then have roughly $100,000 that would still be available above our obligations.
So we're, if I, if I understand what you said, we're at 2,500,000 for Sunset in our estimate, and we have 2.7, correct? So we're cutting that pretty close for next year's building on Sunset.
Your Honor, it does cut it close. This, this project will be one that will take a large portion of our 1% account. I should note that that is the account as of June. So we would still accrue to the tune of approximately 165,000 per month through the construction season to help cash flow and support. So we would still gain on top of that balance at that June period.
I would like to note that this isn't an engineered project that the city did. This is an engineered project that we hired. Is that not true?
Your Honor, that's correct. We retain the services of Enberg Miller for the design.
I only point that out because we try to, so the listening audience understands, we try to do that in-house, and we do about three projects a year in-house. And we used Enberg Miller on this because it was so extensive, and, and so we, we do have some cost overruns, so. And I've been given duly note that we need to be real conscious of what we're doing on Sunset because of the engineering that we need to have developed there. So we might want to have some further conversation on that engineering when we get to that point. I hate to see this happen again on Sunset, because there isn't a lot of money to pay over, right?
Your Honor, that's correct.
So with no other, is there any other discussion? No other discussion, the Chair would entertain a motion to approve the Hill Street Improvement Project Change Order Number 2 in the amount of $196,165.40.
So moved.
Councilman Larson has the motion. Councilman Bailey has the second. Any discussion from the council?
Your Honor, again, I think we want to amend the amount to 193,000, whatever the number was, so that it's correct.
193,165.
I was going to ask that. I missed that number, right?
Your Honor, that's my fault. I apologize.
So we're going to go to 193? Could you give me the number again?
Yes, Your Honor.
192 or 3? Okay. So I'll restate that. The change order amount is 193,165.40. Kyle, do you, is your?
So moved.
Mike, your second?
Yes.
Any further discussion? Michael?
Your Honor, again, I, I think this is a necessary change. I think we gain additional sewer customers, if you want to call it that, by being able to get up Mary Lane. And then I think also, anytime that we find, you know, iron pipe in the ground that's starting to corrode, I think we would be foolish not to replace it when we're already there. And so I, I think this is a good thing. I know we all don't want to spend any more money than we have to, but I really think this is value. And I think that the quicker we analyze our water system and find the, you know, clay and iron pipe and older materials that really have issues, the better off we're going to be, you know? We, we talked about, I forget how many million gallons a year that we just lose and don't know where it goes and all that, and it's probably running out of holes and pipes. And so I think, you know, spending the money on, improving our system is going to save us money in production of water.
Kyle?
One other thing, in addition to what Mike said about saving money, when you make an investment, and that's what this is, we didn't, we didn't flavor or color that we didn't know what the pipe looked like under there because we didn't have the history. We have history now, and I would assume that this is all being put down on AutoCAD so we know where we put it, what it's, what it is. Those conditions didn't occur 50 years ago. We didn't have computers 50 years ago. But the second thing is, if that pipe rips loose, there could be substantial consequences against the city of Riverton for not solving that problem when it was exposed.
Thanks for pointing that out.
We have a, we have a current history of a building development in Florida that was exposed, and everybody just kind of acquiesced to do something about it. So I'm not saying that we could have a ruptured line that would kill nine people, but let me tell you, when you don't do things right and you've got the money, it's awfully embarrassing. Thank you.
Thanks, Kyle. That's a good point. Any other discussion?
I'm just going to point out, digging holes in a brand-new street doesn't give a good optic either.
Oh, that really riles people.
Yep, that does. It makes everybody disappointed. So if there's no further discussion, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Motion passed. Consideration of West Main Water Project Change Order. Public Works Director, please.
Thank you, Your Honor. And before I get into that, I beg a little latitude. I failed to recognize Jeff Patrick in the audience, and I want to give him credit for his work as we've gone through a lot of unknowns on this project, and he's been very dedicated. And I know he's invested a lot of his time as a contractor towards the success of this project, so I thank him for that.
We appreciate him using that big yellow locator and not tearing too many things out. Thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Your Honor, in regard to the change order for the West Main project, I actually request that we would table this. The reason being is more information has come to light since we prepared this change order, and we want to make sure that you get an accurate number. The issue centers on not so much the emergency work that this is related to, that was necessary. We were losing 3 million gallons a month, and it was a threat to the trench, so we had to take care of it. What has, one of the variables that has changed that we want to make sure that we provide accurate information on is the cost of asphalt. The project was designed to have four inches of asphalt put back on Main Street. After this change order was prepared, we learned from YDOT that they would prefer on their highway to have six inches thick. So that affected our asphalt cost. And then we've also been working with 71 Construction, Jerry Bornhoff, and they are work, they proposed using a different oil, and so we have a different unit price for the asphalt as well than what is in your change order. For those reasons, and in an effort to provide accurate information, I request that this be tabled till our next meeting when we can present a more accurate change order.
Okay. So.
One question.
Kyle?
Will this, will this slow the West Main project completely to a crawl if we don't act on it tonight?
No, Your Honor, it will not. I personally do not like the process of doing work without your approval and seeking approval after the fact. But in this instance, because of the water loss situation and the safety situation in the trench, we move forward with the work. This is just ensuring that, from a budgetary standpoint, we have your approval. And so this will not hold things up. We've already moved forward with the contractor because we felt as staff, it was necessary to keep it moving.
I believe if I'm not mistaken, the asphalt went down this morning and this afternoon on those sections. The project is moving forward and shouldn't be, there's just going to, who's going to pay for it now, is the question.
We know who.
Kyle is going to pay for it. So I, I think we're still moving forward, if that's your.
Okay, yes.
Anyone, any other discussion? The, we're going to come off script here, and Kristen grabbed us when we moved too far to the left. The Chair would entertain a motion to table?
Your Honor, there's not a motion on the table to table, so we can just bring it up at the next council meeting without taking any action.
So we don't need to table it all?
No.
Perfect. That's why I like having you here.
Your Honor, I should have checked with Kristen first.
That would be wise.
I know.
Is there any other information that we need to do? We're at, we're at adjournment, if I'm correct? And if there's no other questions or anything from the table, the Chair would suggest that we close if there is no disapproval from the council. We will adjourn at 6:17, 6:18?